The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular city council meeting of August 9, 2023. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. In keeping with council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on this afternoon's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. Statements for items not listed on the agenda are also given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda or a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific item on the agenda will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion of the meeting. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on this afternoon's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards for items listed on tonight's agenda or items or non-agenda items.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Reports Item 3A, a staff report from the city attorney regarding potential amendment to the charter, council salary.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Clerk. So, good afternoon. What I'd like to do for you today is present a PowerPoint. I believe you may have a copy of the PowerPoint in front of you, but as you may recall, back in back in June of this year, you had a presentation by our consultant, Moss Adams, and they talked to you a little bit about the charter in general and some some global reviews that you may be interested in. But at the end of that meeting, there was a general interest in particular with regard to council salary, and there was a referral to my office to return with some historical context, perhaps some additional information, and some options for the council to consider moving forward in 2024 with a potential ballot measure. You also, as I recall, requested a little bit more information with regard to Oakland and the city of Long Beach. I don't recall this being included in the Moss Adams presentation, but as a little bit of a history buff, I found this to be interesting. The most important date, as you can see on here, is actually January of 1915, and that's when we, the voters of this community, adopted and ratified the Charter of the City of Bakersfield. That charter has 12 articles. Again, just a little trivial trivia detail, not many people know that we were actually disincorporated in 1876 because we didn't have enough money to operate. But nevertheless, we seem to turn the tide going the right way. In 1915, we were headed on track. So again, you did receive a lot of information from Moss Adams as to the difference between what's a charter and what's a general law city. I'm not going to go into that tonight, but it does become a little bit more important as we get to the end of this PowerPoint. You all know that as a general as a general rule, charter cities have a little bit more autonomy than general law cities. So the one of the issues, though, when you have a charter is that if you want to change the charter, you must do that during a general election. And in order to go to that general election, we know that it gets very expensive nowadays, but in order to put something on that ballot for the voters, you can propose it as a city council, or it can actually be proposed by the by the citizens within our community. And as you can see by the PowerPoint, it's a 15% of the registered voters. So now let's just dive in and take particular focus with the section that deals with council salary. This was the original section in 1915, and again, you can see that our first council members were paid $50 per month. And then that second sentence there is really important. Thereafter, the council may, by ordinance submitted to a referendum at any municipal election, change the salary of members of the council. And I have added that emphasis there for purposes of tonight. The key there is is that the council salary can be amended one of two ways. You can either do it through the Bakersfield Municipal Code, or you can change it through the charter. And this particular section, 18, has never, since 1915, it has never been successfully amended. With the help of the clerk, I might add that Julie has perhaps as many different charts and information on this particular topic that you could ever want to know. But you may also find it interesting that since 1920, there's been 173 different charter amendments that have been proposed. And of those 173, six of them were either measures or, again, a referendum ordinance that were proposed that was proposed to your voters. And those dates are listed below, and you can see that the only one out of the six that passed was 1956. And we're going to go through each one of them, but I promise you, it's not going to take very long. So in 1947, this was the language that was proposed, and this was a proposed amendment to Section 18. So this was done at a general election, and you're all very lucky that this one didn't that this one didn't pass, right? Because it it wanted to provide that council members shall serve without compensation. And so that that one failed. 1954, instead of changing the charter, there was a movement to actually go with that ordinance referendum, and that was to fix the salary of council members at $200 a month, and that failed. In 1956, this is the one that passed, an ordinance of the city fixing the salaries of councilmen at $100 per month, and then fixing a rate of $20 per day as member of the Board of Equalization. That particular ordinance was Ordinance Number 1079. It went to the voters at a special election, not a general election, a special election. That goes back to what I said a few slides ago, that the charter allows you to change that ordinance at any election. So this went in 1956 at a special election. It increased that pay to $100. And then it went in, it didn't initially go in as Chapter 2.68. It went in, I think, as Chapter 2.12. It was later codified by the codifiers. But nevertheless, it went into your Bakersfield Municipal Code. And this is how the section currently reads. Our concentration there again is on 2.68.010. And simultaneous then, when you go to the charter now, this is how the charter reads. Everything is the same as the original, but it has an asterisk there at the end that you can see, that it was increased to $100 per month, and it refers readers to that particular to that particular section. So moving on about, what, 18 years later, we tried to do it again in 1974, and this time, we went back to a general election, and we tried to change Section 18 of the charter. And this is, I think, what Moss Adams talked to you about the last time. They wanted to amend the charter to provide that salaries of the council shall be equal to salaries of council in general law cities. That failed. 1976, they went back to an ordinance, and they said, shall section, back then, it was 2.12, shall that be amended to provide that it shall be $300 per month. That failed. 1988, we went back to a general election. Shall Section 18 be changed in the amount of $6,000? That failed. 1990, again, they went to the ordinance, and that went to $700 a month, and that failed. So since 1990, there has not been another measure or referendum, ordinance referendum that has been proposed to the community relative to this particular topic. This was something interesting, and I again thank the city clerk for pointing this out. I do not believe that it was mentioned again in the in the review by Moss Adams. There's a new law that went on the books in June of this year, SB 329. It amends the government code section. And I would say that, again, generally, the government code section where it is applies to general law cities. But I would tell you that I think you can make an argument that this particular law, not only does it apply to general law cities, but it would apply to charter cities that are silent on the topic of council pay. And what it does, I'd be more than happy to get any of you a copy of it if you so choose, it lists at least three different tiers of population. And one of the populations in there, as you can see by the third bullet, it says, in cities over 250,000, which of course, that would be the city of Bakersfield, council members will make a maximum of $3,200 per month or more than that, as long as it does not exceed 5% from the last salary adjustment or an amount equal to inflation since January of 2024, based on a CPI, which shall not exceed 10% in the calendar year. So if you were a general law city, and again, you had you had something under 3,200, you could pass a first reading and a second reading of your ordinance. You would not have to go to the voters. If you had more than $3,200, you could again do a first and second reading, and you would be in that second tier there. You could either go 5% or base it on the on the CPI. So that's one situation really where, depending on your your thought process, it may not behoove you to be a charter city, right? Because charter charter general law cities have a little bit more flexibility in this, depending on what your school of thought is. That new law that's on the books also says that no general law city, no city shall pass an ordinance that provides for automatic increases. So every time that you want that increase, you have to have a you have to have a first reading, and most cities have second readings. So this leads us to your options. I would calculate that you have about three, perhaps four options. Option number one, if you choose to move forward on this, would be really to copy what's been successful, and that was what was done in 1956. That's to amend that Bakersfield Municipal Code section. You would do an ordinance. You would submit it to the voters. But it could be, and this was not discussed last time, at any municipal election. So with 2024 coming up, and you have a primary coming up in March, you actually could do this in March. And you could also do it again in November. You're not held to one or the other. You could you could do it both times. The way you would do this is you would direct the city attorney's office to come up with a first and second reading. You'd need to tell me which which election you want to go to. And I just put in there as a sample. I used the $3,200 a month simply because I didn't know what number you wanted in there. And I'm just, again, I'm using 329 as my template. And so it could be something very simple. Shall the city of Bakersfield fix the pay of council members at $3,200 per month? That is really the same that was done in 1956, other than the dollar amount. If you did not want to do a first and second reading and then send it to the county clerk to be submitted to the voters, you could also do a measure. We're very familiar with measures. You would kind of copy what was done with with Measure N, the PSVS, same thing, but you wouldn't have first and second reading because it wouldn't be an ordinance. It would simply be a measure. Again, you could still do it in March, and/or you could you could do it in November. It's just the formatting would be a little bit different. Option number two is you could you could try to do, again, what I think we've done three times, and it hasn't worked, but you could try to amend and/or repeal Section 18 of the charter. I don't see how it's possible to touch Section 18 and not deal with the municipal code, because to me, that's not a clean way. So if you could somehow amend the charter and say, look, I want my salary to be, well, let's just take, I want my salary to be $3,200 a month, but you still left the ordinance on the books that said it was $100 a month. That's not clean. There's a conflict there. And so I would be encouraging you to do something at the general election in November of 2024 that cleans up the charter and cleans up the ordinance however you wanted to do it. I have two samples there for you. Again, there are many, many more samples that you can have. You can say, shall Section 18 of the charter and the Bakersfield Municipal Code section be repealed in their entirety? You could say, shall Section 18 be amended to provide that effective January 1, 2024, the pay of council members shall be? You could either refer to the government code. You could put in your own number, whatever number you felt appropriate. And then, again, you would want a mirror, and shall the Bakersfield Municipal Code section be repealed? Or again, it would be the same. It would be the same dollar amount. This option, really, my guess is, is there not going to be much interest in it, but you could again amend that charter section and don't deal anything with pay. Again, if you're dealing with the pay issue, I think you need to do both the charter and the ordinance. But we talked about some, we talked about some non-substantive changes, and I indicated to you that if you wanted to go in and you wanted to change councilmen to council members, again, that would be a simple charter change. When I say simple, it still is going to cost money in order to do that charter change. But that's how you would do it. You would do it by by way of a measure, and that's the sample there. And option four, oh, I'll get to option four later, but here were some of the here's some of the background information that you wanted. And again, some of these dollar figures are a little bit different than what you've seen before. But I assure you that my deputy called each and every one of these top 10 cities, and that is the salary. They do not repeat. That does not include benefits. And you can see at the bottom there that the benefits, and this is only for the city of Bakersfield, in order to get the benefits for all of the other cities, I'm telling you, it it's going to take a tremendous amount of time because it's all over the books. Benefits can include car allowance. It can it can include cell phone. It can include insurance. And just for Bakersfield alone, it's anywhere from $0 to $3,000 per month, based upon whether on the insurance, whether you're a one, a two, or a family plan. So the zero is a little bit, that would be for a council member that did not want anything. So even the the basic car allowance, that my understanding is each of you get is about $350. So but you could decline to take that car allowance. So I don't think any of you have. So at a minimum, it's the car allowance, and then it can go as high as $3,000 a month. It's my understanding that none of you are at $3,000 a month. None of you have the the family insurance plan. So the most expensive would be would be $36,000 a year in terms of in terms of benefits. When you look at the survey cities, same thing. My deputy called each and every one of these cities. That's where they are in terms of their monthly salaries. And there's a little asterisk there by the city of Modesto. Modesto is the only city in the top 10, as well as the survey cities, that does not allow its council members to take home any additional benefits. So the $2,000 a month for Modesto is the maximum current amount that that they make, that they take home. Again, with the help of the clerk, there's this tentative election calendar that is put in front of you to just let you know that if you do give direction, that this is something that you want to take in the primary in March of 2024, we need to get moving. Because October the 17th is really the deadline for when we need to publish the notice of election, and really need to have that language down pat. And again, most of you were familiar with what happened with PSVS, in the sense, it took some time, it took some strategy. Even the last charter amendment, we came to you several times just to make sure that you were comfortable with the language that was being presented to the voters. So if we're going to do something in March, again, we need some, we need some direction. I thought with that in mind, that you probably would want to look at the voter turnout in both the primaries as well as the general. Again, you can see, we Julie ran this both in 16. You had both a primary in in June and a general. In 18, you just had the general. In 20, you had both. And there's a pretty, pretty good difference between the votes cast in both the, you know, in both those primaries vis a vis the generals in the same year. So last slide, summary of options. Option one, you can go ahead and amend that BMC, very similar to what was done in 1956. You can do it at the general election in November, or you can do it at a special election, which would be in March of next year. Option two is you can, in November of next year, you can amend slash repeal the charter section as well as the Bakersfield Municipal Code so that they are consistent. Option three is, if you're not interested really, or maybe you could do both. If you're interested in some type of non-pay issue, again, that would be amending the city charter. And option four is you can just leave everything as is. So I'll leave this slide up there, and I'm available for any questions, and I'm sure Julie is too. She did run the costs of the general election. And I believe your tentative from the county clerk was $479,000, is my understanding, for a March election, for a March election. Four seven nine. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't quite understand. We'd talked about there were other issues where we're not consistent with state law and stuff that wasn't discussed.
Yeah, thank you, councilmember. Clarification on just, this was a follow-up to the Moss Adams report that provides additional information on this specific topic of the council pay. Still going to come back to council with a framework for looking at the other issues.
But if we're going to go to the voters, I mean, it's all intertwined, right? We'd go to the voters with one that had both or two different measures or whatever.
Agreed, agreed. So one of the reasons that we scheduled this in a timely manner was that if one of the options potentially was to look at something that would allow consideration on the general election, the timeframe on that is much, or excuse me, on the primary election, timeframe on that is much quicker. The rest of the ballot measures would have to go for the general election. But yes, we want to take them a comprehensive look at all of them. We just knew this information needed to come quicker because of, if there was some desire to move it towards the primary, we have to move pretty quickly on that.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ginny, for the presentation today. As I look at this presentation, for me, there's really two questions. One is, which option does this council really prefer? But before that, when do we really want to present this to the voters? Should we select one of these options? My take is that we ought to bring this to the voters in the general election in November, giving us more time to both analyze these different options. We have two council members currently who are not with us this afternoon, but also for us to hear from the from the community as well, to do this in a more thoughtful way. I don't see the need for us to rush this process to get it on the March primary. I think we ought to take our time and be very strategic in how we approach this for November. And so that's going to be my recommendation for tonight. I'm still internally deliberating these various different options, and I'd love to hear from my colleagues. But I will follow up in just a moment after hearing from other colleagues to make a motion to pursue the continue this discussion and bring this to the voters in the general election of next year.
Councilmember Gray.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Ginny. Appreciate you being so thorough in this and giving us the options. It was mentioned in our last conversation on this dais that raising the salaries of council members to a livable wage, excuse me, would open up a broader field of candidates that have to work for a living. And I would tend to disagree with that argument because this entire council, the majority of this council, are still working. And over the history of the city of Bakersfield, the majority of the council has worked. This position was called upon to be a public service position, not a career position in any way, shape, or form. A livable wage plus benefits, and it was also said from the dais the last time we had this conversation, that we as council members should have an office, we should have staff. I am totally in disagreement with that. That's going to add even more on the back of the taxpayers in the city of Bakersfield. And so in order to be able to do something like this, we would have to either decrease the benefits to our constituents and cut back our services, which I don't think most city members would want to do, or we would have to raise taxes again. And we've already done that once through Measure N. We're at 8.25% for sales tax now. I don't think that our constituents would have a stomach to raise taxes again to be able to cover salaries for council members. So this year, we were $10 million short in our budget, and a lot of that had to do with employee costs and insurance and so forth. So I think in my opinion of this is that this business is operated like this since the 1800s. It's operated successfully. We've operated as lean as we possibly can, much leaner than most cities our own size. And those that are that have been serving, they're committed to public service. And that's why I took this job and ran for election was not because of salary, but because I wanted to serve the public. As a working member, I believe that we can and are successfully governing by exercising our authority to first, hire a city manager that supports and protects the city charter and the city goals. That's our, that's our number one responsibility, is make sure that we get the right person in that seat right over there. And I feel that we do have that right person. And with that, then, it's our second responsibility to trust that authority that we've given him, but at the same time, give oversight. And the way we give oversight is through our voting process. We either agree with his, what he is presenting to us, or we disagree. And we vote as a council, and the majority wins out on that. So for the record, I will definitely vote no on this, whether it comes to this dais, whether it comes to the voters in the general election. Whenever it comes forward, I believe, excuse me, that the system that we have in place as a charter city, having more autonomy than a general law city, is something that we should be very proud of in Bakersfield, very grateful for, and that we should continue down the same path. So I would vote to do nothing as far as this. But if it does come to a vote, I'll vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Gray, for those comments. I just wanted to provide some responses to your comments. I too believe that we have to be responsible with taxpayer dollars, and I don't think any of us are interested in raising local sales tax at all at this time. But it is important for us to recognize that the city is growing, and the challenges that we face continue to grow. And the demands on certain council members' time also continues to grow with with the growing city. It grows in tandem. And I think it's important for the public to recognize that it isn't just this council meeting that we're responsible for, but also listening to council member, or excuse me, constituent requests, meetings, and more importantly, where a lot of the policy work actually is developed, attending committee meetings, council committees. And as the vice mayor, I have a responsibility to actually make appointments to council committees. And I can tell you firsthand, it's been a bit of a challenge when certain council members cannot participate in an equal share of committee meetings because of work, because of business priorities, and have communicated to me that they'd rather limit the number of committees that they participate in. And I think that that is one of the stressors that we're trying to address. The reality is, is that the growing demands on the council are real. And in order for us to be an effective governance team, we have to provide additional support. And part of that means addressing salary. And here's why. There are many smart, effective, talented individuals in our community in Bakersfield who want to serve and want to help lead our city forward. And in the future, our city will be better for it if we allow them opportunities to compete and to run for office. But many of them feel that it is impossible to raise a family. Many have small children. I'm not sure if any of us have small children at home. I certainly don't. I can't think of one of us who has small children at home as a parent. They have small children to care for. They have work commitments. We have several council members who either attend or show up late or can't participate in certain council meetings because of their work commitments. So it becomes a real challenge for certain people, working people, middle-class working people like myself, to participate in council meetings on an ongoing basis. We make significant sacrifices to serve, and we're happy to do so. But in the future, we ought to look at ways in which we can include more individuals to participate. And I'm not sure it's a living wage, but I do think it ought to be something that allows for people to afford for people to afford childcare, at least, for childcare while they are serving as a city council member. And so, tonight, I'm going to make a motion that we proceed forward and we continue this conversation, identifying options with the, with the goal of bringing a ordinance adoption and referendum to the voters in the November general election of 2024.
Thank you. Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. While I've been sitting here, listening to this, I keep thinking, how does this benefit the city? I, I understand there are people that might want to run and can't run. I understand there's a lot of conditions that forbid people to do what maybe they want to do. But this is not a social service up here. It is not. It's a business going on here. And if this doesn't benefit the city of Bakersfield, then what's the point? We all have enough on our hands right now. Christian can handle more, I know that, he's told me. And you don't do this for money. You do this for your city. And you don't have to do this. You could go, you could be on a school board, you could be on a lot of committees. And by the way, committees, less is better. We don't need committee after committee after committee. It has kind of gotten out of hand a little bit, and I don't see that as being a positive. So, you know, I'm never going to support this. It is not why I'm sitting here tonight. And if you want to move forward with that, fine. I'm sure the voters will tell us, they don't want us to have a pay increase. We can't even, can't even take care of the problems we've got. So, spend more money on council members who actually don't solve problems. It doesn't seem like it's productive. And like I said, I will never vote for this.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious, since we have two council members not here tonight, do we need four votes or just the majority who's here to do whatever?
A majority, Councilmember Smith.
I'd also state that Councilmember Gray mentioned that we were $10 million short this year. I don't think that's an accurate statement. We had a lot of things to pick and choose from, and if we had the opportunity to have everything we wanted, then yes, we could spend $10 million, but it's not like we were $10 million short. Is that a true statement?
Councilmember Smith, if I could just characterize the statement, what I would say is that we did take $10 million of, well, it was a little less, it was about $8 million of Public Safety Vital Services tax funds to support our, you know, ongoing general fund operations. We do have a balanced budget. We have, it's a structurally balanced budget, but for the historical costs of the general fund, we have offset those with Public Safety Vital Services tax funds this last year, yes.
I think that was the intent of public service measure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's important to acknowledge that certainly I, potentially other members of this council, should see themselves more as the, the exception than the norm. I find myself in a particular position where I do have some flexibility with my full-time job, you know, working at United Way, to be able to work with my CEO, God bless her, who allows me to participate in these committee meetings, to leave work a little bit early so that we can come and attend these meetings as well. But on the flip side, I acknowledge that privilege and recognize that there are many, many residents in my very district who work full-time jobs, who do not have that same flexibility to work with their boss or their supervisor, to get that time to, you know, go home, change, come to this meeting, and, you know, much less participate, you know, from, from that podium down there. And it's so important for us to recognize that oftentimes, we are the exception, you know, and we have to jump through hoops. There are members of this council who are not here today at this very moment, potentially because of other work commitments. Over these past couple of weeks, we've had to reschedule, I think, two, if not three, different committee meetings because of those work commitments. And I think the vice mayor pointed that out correctly. And I think the more competition we could have in our elections, the better, right? Each of us should be able to stand on, you know, the votes that we cast and compete with the best in our very community, and I'm all in favor of that. So, I think with the guidance of the vice mayor of, you know, moving forward and continuing this conversation and getting this on the November ballot, gives us at least an opportunity to hear once again from the voters how they actually feel. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. I don't see any other requests to speak. You have a motion?
Motion passes with councilmembers Weir and Gray voting no, and councilmembers Freeman and Carr absent.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item, please.
Reports item 3B, Gun Violence Reduction Strategy Update. A staff memorandum has been provided on this item, transmitting an updated report regarding gun violence reduction strategy implementation.
Thank you. City Manager Clerk.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a update item. We're seeking just a little bit of feedback on the final portion, but for the most part, it's an informational item on the work that we've done over the last couple of years. So, just to set some context going into this presentation, the city of Bakersfield as a large urban environment does have a violence, violent crime rate that is above the state and national average for all cities across the board. However, if you look at our violent crime rate for cities of our size, fairly comparable. So, we're going to see some trends and graphics here that, that show where we compare against some trends. I think it's important to have the context that most large urban environments, there is more of a gun violence problem than just your typical, you know, small or suburban city. But also, even though we may be trending like some other large cities, for us, any violence is unacceptable, and we want to work to drive down gun violence and other violent crimes as much as possible. And so, in 2020, we pursued a grant that would provide additional funds to the city to implement a best practice that frankly, has seen some implementation in Kern County historically. There have been a couple variations of a similar intensive gun violence reduction strategy, but as has been the case in many communities over the last couple of decades, the communities that invest in this initiative as sort of a one-time project, they see a one-time improvement, then then goes back to trends that are less favorable. And our intention with this effort, as has been a growing best practices, to implement a strategy that works and then sustain it over time. You can't just do this for a couple of years. You have to continue to do this work on an ongoing basis. But we received a $1.5 million grant in 2020 to begin this work. It took us, through the pandemic, some time in 2020 and 2021 to really establish the program that was fully functioning throughout 2022. And so, as has been reported already in a couple other public settings, we saw some really good results in 2022, and some, those good results have continued through 2023. And so, we wanted to make a connection to the work that's being done through this very targeted evidence-based program to those results. I would let you know that often, cities that do this work will have a much more formal evaluation done by, you know, an academic institution. That's not what this report does. It's a little less than a formal evaluation, but it's much more than just an anecdotal report. This is an assessment that has been conducted by our technical assistance partners at the California Partnership for Safe Communities, and looked at the data that we have available to us through our evaluation of the grant program to make a connection to the work that's been done through this program and the results that we've seen over the last year and a half. So, that context, let me just walk through again. This is a report that's been made available to the city council in your, in front of you on the dais, will be sent out with a press release to the broader media, will make it available on our website for our community. And then, part of our audience is actually what's a growing, we call it a community of practice of other cities that do this work throughout the nation and throughout California. That's partly our audience as well, to share some of our findings and, and good news here and with the partners throughout the state who are doing the same work. So, what does the assessment really cover? It does cover what was our serious challenge. We'll walk through each of these in a little bit more detail. Understanding what, what is the nature of gun violence. To really make progress, you have to understand what's really going on underneath, assessing our work to date, looking at some of the data and some of our lessons learned and where we head from here. So, again, we have conducted what's called a problem analysis. That's a term of art within this field, where you really go and do a deep analysis of, of all homicide and gun violence incidents over a certain period. We looked at all of the incidents in 2022. And of course, looking at Bakersfield, again, as a rapidly growing city, has become a large city, ninth largest in California, looking at some of our data to say, of course, the, the gun violence trends are not what we want to see, taking advantage of that grant that I mentioned is the CalVIP grant. And then, looking at a strategy, you need to, again, understand the problem really carefully, and I'll speak more to that in a moment, but then also look for those evidence-informed, evidence-based practices that have produced results for other municipalities. And we spent time developing a strategy that would focus on intervention of those who are at highest risk of violence, and that's through law enforcement and our community-based partners, changing how we police to be more focused on those individuals, also building our team to have the ability to project manage and sustain this effort, and then really looking closely at the data. Let me actually spend just another minute on the previous slide. So, as we look at a problem analysis like this, the data is more in-depth in this assessment for folks that want to really dig in and the community, but in any community like ours, it's less than a percent, a percentage of 1% of the population is responsible typically for 60 to 70% of gun violence. In a community of our size, we have 400,000 residents, you're really talking about only 200 individuals out of that 400,000 are driving a majority of the gun violence. Rather than adopt strategies that focus on the entire population, if you really understand who those individuals are, you can have a much more focused approach to help both with offer services to those individuals, as well as if services are offered and, and not accepted and they continue to pick up guns, then the full focus of law enforcement, both at the BPD, as well as our partners with the District Attorney's Office, in holding folks accountable for gun violence, we can create that focus because it's such a tangible piece of the population. And so, what have we been doing? How does this program really work? So, we have a weekly report where our law enforcement is looking at the specific gun violence incidents that happen every week, and we break them down and look at them in depth. And then, we come together with our partners, and we talk about who are the individuals that, that we can go and offer service and who can we intervene with, and who are the individuals who really just need enforcement? And we also work with community partners that are spending time in high-risk places like in hospitals, where individuals may be recovering from a gunshot wound. We have partners that are in those spaces, talking to them, their family members, their cohorts, their individuals that are, you know, part of their groups, to try and intervene and make progress there. As you'll see here, the hospital-based violence partners have engaged with 179 individuals over the 2022 period, and we looked at gun violence incidents throughout the city, and there was, you know, more than 100 gun violence incidents in 2022. That was our, sort of our sample size, and we looked deeply at each one of these. Also, I would note for that last bullet, we did, of course, also compare ourselves against other benchmark cities, and most cities did see a uptick through some of those pandemic years, and some cities saw a slight return to baseline numbers, but our large percent reduction was the most significant drop in homicides of any of the benchmark cities that we saw in the time period that we took a look at. This is just our numbers as something to look to. If you look even farther back from 2013, typical homicide numbers in Bakersfield were, you know, between, you know, about 30 homicides plus or minus. As the city has continued to grow, those numbers, you know, started to trend up, but then we saw, of course, in those pandemic years, significant increases that were just not acceptable. And so, we implemented this program, and we saw that 37% reduction in 2022. If you look at a combination of 2022 and early parts of '23, we've actually seen a 40% reduction in homicides, 49% reduction in gang shootings, and a 30% reduction in shot-spot alerts. Again, if you look at other trends, there have been some cities that have seen some baseline returns to numbers after the pandemic. Some cities have continued to see very high escalated homicides after the pandemic. And again, this level of reduction is significant. We can't say it's a one-to-one correlation to our work, but we are drawing a connection to this intensive work that we've done to see that large of reductions in, in both shootings and homicides. So, some of the key lessons learned, and again, these are covered a little bit more in-depth, but this is a big issue. You can't just rely on law enforcement, but you also can't just rely on service providers. This takes a series of different partners working together in very close collaboration and an intensive focus. That's one of the key lessons learned, as well as it has to be very focused on specific individuals at highest risk of violence. And when you can be that focused, you can make a big impact. Sometimes, we may spend a lot of resources on one individual, but that's the one individual who's driving retaliation, shootings between two different groups or gangs, and if they're out of the equation, you see a big reduction. Also, I can't emphasize enough how thankful we are to our community partners for the work that they do. These are the individuals who are going to a home of someone who's been shot at. Let's say someone's been the victim of gun violence, and we notice- We noticed that in our review of gun violence from the last week. We're asking a community member to go and knock on the door of that home and try and start a conversation about the safety of that individual. It's not an easy conversation to start. It takes someone who has some lived experience or some trusted messenger status to be able to go in and have that conversation and earn enough trust with those individuals to start having a conversation about how can they receive some services and transition away from that lifestyle. So our community partners do really important work. But also, you have to stay focused on the data. And we've had a few conversations as a partnership. We keep scorecards of groups that are most involved in the activity so that we can have conversations about, you know, are we really focusing on the right people? And if you don't follow the data, you often get sidetracked and you end up spending your efforts where you're not going to have that return on investment or return on value. So we have to stay focused on data. So where do we go from here? We have spent some of our city-owned city funding to get a new data management system to help us to even more closely track case management and the data for our partnership. I think it's also worth noting that we did receive a second $3 million grant to continue to do this work. We are spending some of our ARPA funds that we had set aside for gun violence intervention to continue to pay for our community intervention partners that were under our first grant. That first grant is now expired. We're going to be coming back to the council with some contracts to continue that work in the next couple of months. But we did receive a new grant to expand our work to include the families of the individuals that are impacted by this as well as to get into the schools. So we're working closely with schools to identify those at-risk youth before they become the highest at-risk. They're very, they're very at-risk, but they're not the highest at-risk to try and get them into services and programs before they're at the center of gun violence. And then, we do need to continue to stay true to this evidence-based program, to work with our CBO partners and to continue to work with the, the CVI means, you know, community violence intervention. We need to work closely within this community of practice to make sure we're honing this program to be as, as effective as possible. And there are certain components that have been implemented in other municipalities that we have yet to implement. We, we have offered some assistance to these individuals that we consider our clients that are at risk of gun violence. We've helped with some of their job training programs. We've helped them get tools or equipment that they need to be able to get a job. Some municipalities consider whether we should offer other assistance. Do we offer some rental assistance if it helps them move from, you know, a tough neighborhood to a neighborhood where they may not have some of those same gang conflicts? And so, there are certain program components where we may choose to, to grow this program, but we've been doing it in a measured fashion to make sure it's happening where it's, we're getting the best bang for our buck. But we, we do need to sustain this work. If we take our, our eye off of this emphasis, my assumption would be that we would see our numbers start to trend back upward again. Transitioning a little bit from this too, is that part of our new grant is a little bit more of this focus in schools on the social determinants of health. We want to look at education. We want to look at economic stability, healthcare, the neighborhood and built environment and their community context. And so, another best practice is to look at programs that can be more prevention-oriented before folks get into these types of situations. And so, we've asked our CalVIP, and we apologize, this is a little bit small on the screen, but we asked our CalVIP team, project management team, to do research into other municipalities that have implemented programs that have demonstrated good results in violence prevention efforts. And to set some context for that is, we also looked at some of our local trends and some of the areas where we're seeing at-risk challenges. So this is not probably a surprise to most members of the city council, but we have seen challenges around literacy that we have high percentages particularly compared to national and state trends of individuals that struggle with literacy. We've also seen educational attainment be an area of potential improvement. And we've also seen that some of our, many of our students are in economically disadvantaged situations as reported through school districts. And we've also seen a significant increase in suspensions for violent offenses within our schools. So we looked at where do those programs that can help make an impact for those individuals? Oh, excuse me. And I, we, we also looked at some national trends around violence and that often you'll see here, after-school times are a time of vulnerability and particularly around schools and parks in some of those vulnerable times. So what are some of the things we can do about this? The best practice research that we've done across multiple other municipalities shows that different programs that are associated with schools such as literacy, summer programs, after-school programs have really big impacts, keeping youth active, keeping them engaged. We also recognize that sometimes those outdoor activities or, or sports programs, other alternate programs, again, are things that can be an outlet for young folks. Cognitive behavior therapy are programs that help individuals have a shift in mentality and learn more pro-social behaviors that maybe they haven't learned within their existing environments. And then lastly, when we look at adult education or even job training, there are many municipalities that are taking, again, a focus on at-risk youth because we, we know we have, you know, tens of thousands of students within the Bakersfield metro area. We can't serve every student with all of these programs, but if we can help some of those that are at highest risk to have access to education helps, to workforce prep or to literacy programs or after-school programs, we think we can make an impact on those that are most vulnerable for entering into lifestyles that put them at risk of gun violence. And so, we would be recommending to the city council that we develop proposal programs with funding that has been already set aside. This council has set aside $500,000 in the budget under Public Safety Vital Services for these types of violence prevention programs that we solicit local partners that can do this work. Just so that you know, as we've done a quick scan, we know that, you know, United Way of Kern County does a lot of early childhood literacy and they also have some after-school programs. The Kern County Library Foundation is working heavily on literacy right now. We also know that our own Bakersfield Police Activities League is offering after-school programs. Boys and Girls Club is offering after-school programs and sports programs. And then Kern Community Foundation actually has a Youth Connect program that helps with some of these types of programs as well. So that we know there are local partners that can offer these services and we'd like to solicit folks to help provide these type of programs with that funding to make an impact here in our great city of Bakersfield. Again, you know, that we don't think that we're the best at these types of work. We don't think that these should necessarily be city functions, but we think we can support community partners in offering greater levels of service, particularly targeted to those individuals that we know are at highest risk. With that, would be open to comments and questions from council.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. Let's see, any requests to speak? Stephen File? Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Christian, for giving this update. You know, I think that this is one of the most impactful ways that we can invest taxpayer dollars is to continue to, you know, empower community members, empower some of the local nonprofits that do this work, to continue to help each individual and each family in a time of crisis. I think that, that's what this work is geared towards and just want to say thank you to the team. I see several members in the, in the crowd who do this work on a daily basis. So just want to let you know that we see you, we appreciate you, and we're excited for, you know, to sustain this program but continue to build on these relationships. And so, that's, I guess, where my head is. You know, how do we continue to drive this work forward? What are the next milestones that we can set forth for ourselves to continue on this pace and ensure that, you know, we're doing everything we can to help these families?
Would you care for me to comment on that last part?
Please.
Thank you, Councilmember. So a couple of quick thoughts. And there was, you know, actually a media inquiry earlier today saying, are we going to continue to see these like 30% reductions? And after you've already achieved a 30% reduction and another 30% reduction on that 30% reduction, it's, it's very hard to continue that aggressive of reductions. And it is typical in programs like this to see some early significant wins, but then have a little bit of a plateauing because you have to dig deeper to go to the next step. Our goal is to continue to see between a 5 and 10% reduction in gun violence over a consistent time period because, you know, we're thankful that we've been able to reduce back to, you know, a much lower rate. But when you've, when you're kind of at that, you know, that 30 homicide rate, it's, it's pretty hard to make major gains lower than that, but we want to continue to push it like that 5 to 10% consistent growth in our, in our progress. How do we do that is the other part of the question. As I mentioned, there are some program components I think we can still build out. One of those is to have a deeper set of services that are available to these potential clients. We actually are working right now on a, a life coaching program. It's called Healthy, Wealthy, and Wise that is going to be, will be able to offer to some of these individuals to help them, you know, over time, shift in, you know, their outcomes and behaviors. Typically, to make a major shift like that, it's not something you do in a couple of months even. You know, it can often take six, 12, 18 months to make that shift. And so, we're, we're offering an increasing array of services that we are building out over time. I think another piece is actually having what's called more direct communication with individuals. It's actually bringing people in and sitting them down and saying, you know, we're aware of your situation and background. We want to be candid and upfront with you that we know who you are and we know that you're on a path towards one of two things, either being harmed or, you know, having incarceration. And we'd rather not have either of those two things happen, but here's the, here's the off-ramp, here's the path away. But if you don't put down those guns and you continue on that path, you're going to have our full focus. Having that direct communication with individuals on a one-on-one basis has been demonstrated to be very effective in other municipalities. And largely, we've been interacting with individuals through our community-based partners just going and, and offering this intervention and mediation, which has been great, but it can be even stronger with this very direct communication that comes from sort of officials in partnership with community-based organizations to send that message out. And that message typically goes beyond that individual to, you know, their associates as well. And then, the last thing I would just point to again is, we know we can't be a, a service provider to all for all things, but we do think there's a space to work with community partners for our most at-risk individuals to help them, you know, stay away from that path or come quickly back off that path through some of these more of prevention programs. And we're excited to move in that direction next.
Great. Thank you so much, Christian. Well, I think you hit it on the head with the last couple of slides that there are community-based organizations who are doing this work. And when we have, you know, whether that's, you know, representatives from the Bakersfield Police Department or representatives from community-based organizations who are engaging with the families of the victims, we want to make sure that they have as many tools in the toolbox as possible so that they can be more successful in addressing some of the needs that are going to prevent that next shooting. So with that, I want to make a referral tonight that the city manager's office prepare and research some strategic opportunities for us to invest in some of these programs, whether that be arts, sports programming, literacy, job development programs, or even housing supports to be able to provide for those families in this upcoming budget cycle. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. The five peer cities, are they all involved in programs like this? I didn't catch that.
They are.
And so, some are, was it Stockton is still seeing increases even with the program?
Actually, Oakland is, and I'm trying to think back to the report itself. Stockton has continued to see decreases actually, but Oakland has continued to see increases. Oklahoma City, I believe, is, you know, kind of middle of the road, but there have been a couple of cities that have continued to see increases despite having programs in place.
So the, the number we were at in '22 is 38, which really is comparable to pre-pandemic or still above pre-pandemic. Are the other cities, comparable cities at pre-pandemic levels or is everybody still kind of above that?
No, it's a good question, Councilmember Smith. It's, it's a mix. There's a couple of cities that are back to pre-pandemic levels. I believe there's one city that's, that's just a little bit lower than pre-pandemic levels, but they, that happened over a multi-year decrease. And so, again, our one-year decrease was, you know, probably the most significant amongst our peers, but there are others that are still well above pre-pandemic numbers.
This type of intervention in the peer cities, 10 years, five years? I mean, we've only been at it a couple of years.
No, very, very good question. So the peer cities that we chose have a fairly similar timeline to, to ours with the exception of Oakland has actually been at this work for a very long time, but they've actually had a couple of different cycles where they worked hard and made big improvements and then, then shifted focus a little bit and then saw some, you know, increases that they didn't want to see. I would say to just, this is not quite what you asked, but I also wanted to just share that there have been some communities that have been doing this work for probably 20 years. And so, there's a lot of data and research on this program across the country, you know, for a long enough time period where it's very, you know, it's, it's an evidence-based practice. There are other communities that are just getting started and others that have been at it maybe five or 10 years. So we, we looked at cities that are more, you know, probably in the five-year range, but we also included, you know, some that were, they had restarted within the last five years, but even if they'd had prior experience. So it's a little more comparable because we're a little bit younger. But there's, you know, some cities like, you know, San Jose that's been doing this consistently for 15 years and they've, you know, continued to see long-term trends, but most of the peer cities we looked at, specific to this assessment, it was a little bit shorter timeframe for their implementation.
Is it a really expensive line item? I mean, why would you drop it if it's successful and gun violence is such a problem?
You know, it's, it's a little bit expensive. We're talking about, you know, probably, you know, $2 to $3 million, you know, depending on the size of the program, size of the city. I think some of it is just that folks assumed that if you made a lot of progress, then you'd be okay. And folks have learned that you do have to sustain and so, not as many people are, are stepping back from it anymore because we've seen other cities cycle through it and have that bad roller coaster. But, you know, when, when you're in a tight budget, maybe $2 or $3 million does look like, you know, something you could shift to another priority, but in the long run, you, you pay a lot more for moving around the cost.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, great program. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Smith, vice mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I want to echo the same point that Councilmember Smith made a great program, really encouraging results thus far. Just remind me again, on the CalVIP Cohort 4 grant, that $3.1 million multi-year grant, when does that expire?
We still have two more years on that grant. We've been through just the first year of that grant.
Okay. And then, you know, regardless of, you know, obviously, you know, state funding or what Okay. And then regardless of, obviously, state funding or whatnot, we're thinking strategically locally with our local dollars to sustain programs beyond that.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. And I would, this is a good opportunity to remind. When we first implemented this program, my communication to council at the time wasn't even through the Public Safety and Vital Services Oversight Committee. When we first proposed this program, we received a $1.5 million grant, but we also matched that grant with city investment. And my communication at the time was we should plan ahead to continue to fund the costs for this program regardless of whether we get grants. We want to continue to be competitive. There's actually movement at the state level to create ongoing funding streams for this work from states to municipalities. And we're interested in principle with that movement. And hopefully, those funds continue to come from the state. If not, though, I would suggest this is at the heart of the Public Safety and Vital Services tax and we should continue to fund that. As I had mentioned, we set aside some ARPA dollars to support these programs as a direct, I mean, it's a line item eligibility from the feds listed in ARPA. And that will help us support these programs for the next year or two. But I would expect to make a recommendation to continue funding in PSVS. I would say we've been, it's been favorable to get very large grants. And this last CalVIP cycle at the state, they had a surplus and so they gave away very large grants. So I'm not saying we need to fund it at the tune of 3.1 plus 1.5. I think our investment's going to be more modest than that. Like what we're investing in ARPA in this coming year is about $400,000 of ARPA funds to continue to support these programs. So just to put into context what that investment probably looks like into the future, it's probably like in the $1.5 million to $1 million range. But that's, I think, a worthwhile investment that gets the biggest bang for our buck but continues the programs.
Great. And I would certainly agree and support that and look forward to having those conversations in future budget cycles. I'm also very interested in our violence prevention work and I'll join Councilmember Arias in a referral tonight to look at strategic investments in order for us to give better resources to those young people, particularly in disadvantaged neighborhoods. And I want to point out two particular institutions that I think we ought to partner with. Number one is the Baker Branch Library and number two is the Holloway Gonzalez Branch Libraries. These are within the heart of East Bakersfield and Southeast Bakersfield. Baker Street Branch Library is closed on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. It's only open two days a week. Holloway Gonzalez on East Bundage, that library is closed Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. There are fewer resources available for young people within those neighborhoods because of the limited hours. And I think that we ought to, as a city, support our citizens in those communities by partnering with the county to extend hours of service so that they have access to a safe place to learn, to grow, to engage in a different activity. So I'm going to make that referral tonight as well. And with that motion, if there are no other comments, I'm going to make a motion to receive and file.
If a motion, please catch your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmembers Freeman and Corr absent.
Thank you. That's our last agenda item, so we stand adjourned at 4:46.